Twenty twenty-two, it is now six thirty. I'll ask Councilman Hancock to give our opening prayer.
Well, let's pray. God of justice and mercy, help guide us always. Thank you so much for the gift of being here and the opportunity to serve. Help us to act with character, to listen with understanding and concern, and to speak with civility. And in this Advent season, we continue to have our minds on the hope and peace as we await Christmas. Help us to never take what we are doing tonight for granted, for it is definitely a desired privilege. Bless all those that are present with us tonight. Amen.
Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, do you have a copy of tonight's agenda? Are there any changes that need to be made at this time? You or none need a motion to approve? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. The now, which next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the November first, regular scheduled council meeting, and the November seventh, twenty twenty-two, scheduled meeting, special meeting, and the November seventeenth, special meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made at those meeting minutes at this time? You or none need a motion to approve? Got a motion? Got a second? Mr. Hancock, any further discussion? You or none, all favor, raise your right hand. Now, which next on the agenda is the public hearing for the budget. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to open the floor for public comment. Got a motion, Mr. Hancock? Second, Mr. on the end? All of them to be named. Mr. Hutto, any further discussion? You or none, all favor, raise your right hand. Alright, the floor is open for public comment for the twenty twenty-three budget. Go away.
I would like to say that I did have questions, but I do want to thank town administrator Shane for taking time this week to go over that, so it wouldn't hold up anything tonight. Amazing situation where he was able to explain anything and answer all questions. And I want to thank him for being here and thinking the time to go over this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sly. I'll give at least a minute, just in case somebody changed their mind and wants to come up here, so. Alright, one last, one final call. We will close public hearing. Need a motion from council to close public hearing for the twenty twenty-three budget. Got a motion from Mr. Hancock and Mr. Hutto. You second, Mr. Hutto? Second, Mr. Hutto? All favor, raise your right hand. That portion of our meeting is closed. Now we'll move to item six, which is person's appearing for council. Do we have anyone that would like to come for council?
No one signed with it, it was common.
No one has signed it.
Remember, Saturday night is our downtown Christmas celebration. We are going to have the streets closed. We've got eight food trucks. We've got twelve vendors. We've got a dance contest, a singing contest, a Cindy Lou hair contest. We have a lot of things going on downtown. And the parade will start at five. It will start at the police department. And we have rented horse-drawn carriages. And we invite, we have ten seats available. We are inviting council. If they will be at the police department by four forty-five, we are going to put the town council and their spouses, if they wish, into the horse-drawn carriages for the parade. So you don't have to worry about getting cars or anything like that. We are going to furnish you guys with horse-drawn carriages for the parade. So we hope to see you guys there. It starts at two, ends at eight. But for the parade, we'd need you there by four forty-five. Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, one last call for public comment. We'll move on to old business. Under old business, we have, we move on to the, sorry, you're already doing it too. Under old business, we had the Parks and Recreation Master Plan presentation. Mr. Blake Sanders, please, you have the floor. And I need to unplug this.
Yeah, I won't steal that from you.
Yeah, where's your H get mine? Before you get started, which one of these lights cuts off, just the lights over the?
We'll have to play with it.
Just don't push that far left, the big ones.
Probably one of the small switches.
That's it. That's good enough. That helps, helps with the public, we can see that a little bit better. I don't know if the public can see that, but.
If you'd like to go to sleep, you can.
No.
Thank you for starting the council meeting early, so that I could speak for an hour and go through this report page by page. So I'm Blake Sanders, president and landscape architect with Studio Main Landscape Architectural Planning Company. And I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come back and kind of walk through high level, the final draft of Parks and Rec Master Plan. I'm going to recap some things that we've already talked about. And then, Mr. Sly will be sending you guys, if you haven't already, there's about a hundred-page report that goes along with this. It goes through the public input and the detail of the plans. So it starts with the process and understanding what the scope was. Four-pronged approach, discovery and data, needs and assessments, recommendations and cross-checking. And then now we're at the action steps and talking about commitment. And so the vision was to provide a cohesive plan for the town that reflected your character, that provided adequate opportunities for residents and visitors to recreate, gather, enhance your open space, natural resources, and significant lands. With that, we put together a series of goals that would provide you with a variety of recreational opportunities that would be sensitive to the location of those, to the types of development that would occur on the property, to beautify the parks, and then to offer what we call close-to-home recreational opportunities. So that may mean that some of your parks end up getting a little bit larger, or perhaps there are new parks in certain areas of the town that would serve different demographics and different members of your town. And so we had a public input participation that was done via online and drop-in meetings. So we had two hundred and twenty-three responses, seventy-five percent of which originated within the municipal boundaries. And so asked a series of questions about how often they visited the park, what would they like to see changed as part of the park system or the parks department. So about fifty percent of respondents go to Cambraco or Moores Park on a monthly or weekly basis. Pig Park is where you only have someone that may go yearly, if they go at all. Over fifty percent never go to Pig Park. So we start talking about opportunities for development in that area. And then we also asked, what activities do you like, do you enjoy? And it's a long list of things that they could pick from. They had to pick their top five. Walking, swimming, fishing, concerts, and events. Those were the top five from these seventy-five percent that responded in town. And so after talking to the public, after meeting with steering committee, which was staff, elected officials, residents, and then park users, started looking at what are some high-level policies that you could start to implement to start to make a difference that wouldn't necessarily cost any money. And so they're broken into administration and facilities and programs. These are all in your report. I'm expecting to try to be able to read this. And I won't go through all of them. But some of those high-level things, you know, just creating and promoting help-focused initiatives at Cambraco Park. You already have a great walking program there. Start to promote it as a true senior activity center. Have different activities that are occurring throughout the day. Start thinking about a townwide park brand. You'll see in all the cost estimates that new signage would be required if those parks are proposed at those parks. Implement a committee that would be comprised of those residents and businesses and staff. So think about maybe that Parks and Rec Committee could stay together to start to meet annually to talk about how these things could be implemented. And then as far as the facilities, some of those include some of your partners in DOT and the county. Just thinking about some of the road networks, sidewalk networks. When we talk about trying to have every resident within a half mile of a park, that means they need to be able to walk there safely to get to that park. So thinking about just the addition of sidewalks or high-visibility crosswalks. And then as we start to think about programs, advertising those new programs. Nothing is better than selfless promotion, letting people know that your parks are receiving upgrades or that you have programs that are offered at any and all of the parks. And then, as I said, meeting yearly to discuss not only the pieces of the plan to implement, but then also arts and culture, which you'll see as part of the plan, there are elements for vertical arts or vertical sculptures. And so those were some of the high-level recommendations. And then we wanted to start looking at each park. Again, council, these are some of the same renderings that you've seen as part of the previous presentation with some minor revisions, but I do want to walk back through those. So for Pig Park, it was improving the dam. It was, you know, bringing it back to its glory days. Perhaps it's got some fish back in it with a walking path that goes around it with a fixed pier out to the center, a nice focal point for photos. The baseball field in its current location would remain. There's addition of picnic shelters that are out there along this shared-use path network that goes around the entire park. So you think of driving here, parking, walking the loop, you know, two and a half times would be a mile. There are opportunities for natural surface trails that would go along the edge of the pond. So you think about educational opportunities with native, say, plant species and having, once an extension office put signs out there for those. Kind of the major focal point of Pig Park would be when you turn into the entrance drive, the long view would be the signature pavilion. So that would have the restrooms in it. Perhaps architecturally, it has a high-pitched gable roof, so it looks different and it stands out. And off of the rear of it would be a large amphitheater. So that amphitheater could seat between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand people. The backdrop would be your signature pavilion and the architecture of that, and it would kind of fade into the wood line. So that's why I say it's a variable number. It could feel intimate with two hundred people, or you could fit a thousand people out there and have people sitting up in the trees. The basketball courts have been relocated, and then you have a large signature playground in that area. I'll also say that there are opportunities to start connecting to adjacent industries across the street. And so again, the healthy-focused initiatives, not only for economic development and retention of employees and recruitment of businesses, but being able to tie those industries in across the street would be a huge win to get some daily use out of Pig Park. Also, just looking at kind of before-after photos, you know, before photos of where people drive at, well, why don't we make that a place where people can ride their bike, where they can walk out as part of that shared-use path system? Making sure that we include trees. It gets hotter than heck in the Midland area, so let's make sure we add shade wherever we can. You'll see that all the playgrounds have a shade cell over those. As part of your report, you have an implementation workbook that gives you kind of the short, medium, and long-term goals for each park. And so again, while all of them, some of those short-term goals might be including the shared-use path, might be including your park signage, so you can get people aware of what's going on and where the parks are at. And then some of those long-term goals would be some of those larger ticket items, the amphitheater, the signature pavilion. All of them have a cost estimate. I don't want you to, once you get sticker shock when I tell you that Pig Park has a five-million-dollar cost estimate associated with it. That includes a twenty percent contingency of things that we haven't thought about, prices going up or prices going down on certain things. And then also twenty percent for you guys to hire local architects and engineers and surveyors and geotags and all those fun folks and professionals that get to implement this. But again, it's a phased approach. It has an opportunity to have a low-budget implementation of, say, five hundred thousand dollars for an amphitheater or a playground, or relocating the basketball court for the parking to start to get some use out there. Cambraco Park, amazing park, amazing opportunities, actually fairly well-maintained in its current state. We'll talk a little bit about maybe what could be done out there in the short term to improve the sod and grasses. But what we do have is an expansion of that shared-use path network that gets used a good bit. The parking lot being reworked. So you'll see, if you ride out there now, you'll see that there's not a tree one in that parking lot. So we're thinking about heat island effect, making sure that each parking island ends in a tree, that there's clear vehicular and pedestrian circulation, so we make sure we don't have any conflict once you park to start the walk or walk somewhere that you don't almost get hit by a vehicle. The far, what I'll call the far-left side, where there's a playground and a picnic shelter now, the shelter would remain and be rehabilitated, and then those recovered batting cages in that area. The reason that we've removed that playground is that we've located a playground slash splash pad next to the gymnasium, which would be signature. So you would want to be able to see it from the road. You want all of the children or students to be able to use that. And it has a signature pavilion associated with it. So you have new parking, signature playground with splash pad area, and you have pickleball courts, and then you have this central drop-off area. And so we think about the regional approach of this park. This is one of your only regional parks where people are traveling definitely from the outside in to come to this facility for baseball. So let's take them to a point where, you know, grandpa and grandma get dropped off at, mom and dad are dropping off the kids to run down to the dugouts before they go and park, and there's this grand approach. And then, you know, knowing that, again, sandy soils, how do we get some sod to grow through here? Irrigation, irrigation, irrigation. But then when you get a chance, if you do reconstruct this park in phases, adding six inches of topsoil and then starting with a new fresh base of that soil, we'd probably go a long way if you can some healthy sod out there. But just knowing that, again, the addition of the trees, the draining of that makes a huge difference in the cleanliness of the park. Again, short, medium, and long-term goals. Your short-term goals, again, the signage, but then also ADA accessible paths. I can't stress enough the accessibility needs in all of the parks, but especially ones where you're encouraging visitors from outside to come in, making sure that all of the amenities are connected with an accessible path. And then some of those long-term goals, you know, adding the pickleball courts, formalizing the drop-off areas. Again, long-term visioning with a price tag of about four million dollars if you were to just stroke a check and start completing this project. And then Moores Park Downtown, this one is kind of near and dear and special to me. I believe that downtown is on the heartbeat of communities, and so I want people to feel welcome in parks that occur in downtown areas. And so for Moores Park, removing the alley through the center of the park, which divides it from the gazebo and the playground, the alley connecting through downtown becomes kind of a main entrance from Main Street. Think string lights, you know, arcs and sculpture at the end of it, the gazebo being obviously the main feature through there. But that allows you to bisect the parking lot area. So you have kind of a parking for downtown, then also a parking for the existing picnic shelter and the existing restroom that would be upgraded. Reason that's important is that that gives us a direct ADA-accessible route from those couple of ADA spaces to a new ADA playground, which would occur nearest the existing playground with a new shelter. And then there would be a large signature playground that occurs kind of under the existing tree canopy that you have. This is one, this is the only playground that we've recommended not have a shade cell over the top, and that's because of the tree canopy that you have downtown. You would also see, once you're able to download the report and zoom in, you'll see that there's a new landscape and some new pathways around the gazebo. That's just to just add beautification to the park and then a new streetscape up along the left side. There we go. Is that Pearl Avenue?
Pearl Street.
Pearl Street. Some of the trees have been removed through there, so replacing those trees. I'll also say that all three of the plans that I've shown you so far are intended to be malleable. Once you get out there, once the engineers start working on it, things are going to change. Don't get upset when you go, "And that wasn't exactly what Blake said it was going to be." It's okay. Things are going to, things are going to change, things are going to happen. As well for this park, some of the fencing has been removed. Father of a fourteen and ten-year-old, I don't like playgrounds, but I feel like I drop them off in cages. And so this allows kind of the park to free-flow through. You still have the fencing where there are steep slopes or hazards. And so just a couple of photo simulations of what the alley could look like coming back through downtown. Landscape, string lights, you know, accenting the lighting, fresh paint on the rear buildings. And then the removal of the alley through here would also mean the removal of those concrete plumes. We can cheap flow the stormwater down through the existing ditch. And the implementation for that, short-term, your ADA accessibility, again, is key. Your park identification signage, and then your shelters, your benches, and your accessible playground with a total cost of about three-point-two million dollars, again, all in, but also with twenty percent contingency and twenty percent for your professional fees. So those were the parks that you all have as part of your townwide system we were past looking at. But it also doesn't cover all of the parks in the area if we start to think about equitable distribution of parks. And so if I were to look at Cambraco and Pig and Moores, and I put a radius around those based off of what type of park they classify as as far as a regional destination or a local park, you can see kind of the whole northern side of your city is not near a park. And so you have an opportunity to do neighborhood parks throughout the city. I'm not going to specify that this is one street or another street, but it could be anywhere in the city where there's not an existing park or there's a need for an equitable distribution, equitable distribution of parks throughout the city. And so for those parks, perhaps there's just a handful of parking spaces. It wouldn't need to be many. There's a lot of neighborhood parks that don't have any parking spaces for the neighborhoods, for the neighbors to walk through the park. You want to make sure that connectivity is included in that, so the sidewalks that are getting through the park. But then, the only thing that these parks would include would be a picnic shelter and a playground facility. It wouldn't have to be your signature playground. It wouldn't have to mirror what you do at Cambraco or Pig. This could be a much smaller playground component. And so still giving short, medium, and long-term goals, but these parks are about five hundred thousand dollars apiece with your parking, with your playground, and your picnic shelter. And again, these can occur anywhere throughout the city, but predominantly on that northern side where new development is occurring. I encourage you to look at your zoning ordinance and work with your planning commissioner or planning department to look at new policies for subdivisions or new plaits that perhaps are over X number of lots. X is completely arbitrary, so you pick what that lot number would be, that you require a certain percentage of open space, or you require them to construct a park within their neighborhood that would be D to the city so that you all could maintain it for the life of it. So you think about a new development, say, with a hundred homes and they built a one-acre park, wouldn't be owned by the HOA, but it could be used by the entire city, and it starts to fill that void of park areas throughout your city without you having to build it. Just one opportunity. And then there's a piece of property downtown. And thinking about what this property could be and thinking about how to tie the history of the town, how to tie a downtown drawl, again, from Moores Park through. There's a, there's a unique opportunity to share some parking. Mayor, you're going to have to help me with the street names, street names. We got Sycamore?
We got Sycamore on the right, Pearl on the left, and I think that's Soul Street.
Soul Street, there we go. So unique opportunities to share parking with adjacent businesses that are there. You have a, there's an old rail line that runs through here. And so kind of the brown rectangles that you see in the middle is the opportunity to use perhaps old railcars. You could use one as a restroom, you could use one as a concession stand or ice cream shop, or whatever the town saw fit. Thinking about events and spaces, not a large amphitheater, but a smaller gathering spot. This could have kind of a terrace lawn through it, have a large shade cells. You could have a musical event or something small out there. And then this perhaps could be where your signature splash pad occurred at. You know, I use that term over at Cambraco Park, thinking about a playground or splash pad there. This could be an opportunity for kind of a signature downtown splash pad. So think about, or Google or research case studies with the city of Fountain Inn or the city of Greenville and how they use splash pads or water play in their downtown, just as part of their event space. Again, there's some short, medium, and long-term goals that are associated with this as far as long-term goals, constructing a terrace amphitheater or the restroom using the railcars. But short-term goals, just coordinating some parking, having it as a green space and starting to program that. Again, two things, events and concerts, that's what we kept hearing from the public as far as the number four and number five things that we wanted as part of their park facilities. This is about a two-million-dollar project in downtown. And so rough math, you've got ten million dollars worth of projects to do. How fast can you get them done? Take a deep breath. This is a marathon, it's not a sprint. We're not trying to do them all tomorrow. You'll be receiving a report that has all the details of this, the reasoning, the rhymes, the why, the NRPA metrics that you can start to look through. It makes really good bedside reading if you want to get bored really easy and go to bed. There's some, the first two chapters will put you right to sleep. But it does have eleven-by-seventeen foldouts of the plans, so you can actually start to zoom in and look at those. Get to know the plan well. I've given the mayor and administrator a copy of this presentation, a copy of the report. I want you guys to feel comfortable with it, that you can present it to local funders, that you can start to prepare grants with it. The reason you do these plans is not so that you can immediately build something, it's so that you can immediately ask for money to build something. Now that you have a plan in place, now that the public has been involved, the steering committee, and now all of the elected officials, you have a document that says, "This is what we want to do. Let's see how we're going to get there." And then find a short-term goal in each park and try to do it over the next twelve months. It may be planting trees, it may be switching out benches, getting rid of some of the old recycling-looking trash carts at Cambraco Park. Just a low-hanging fruit, short-term goal to show progress throughout. Appendix B in the report is all funded. And so it's federal, state, and local funding options that you can use to start to implement these pieces. Again, blessed to be able to work with you all, blessed to get to do this across the southeast. But Mayor, thank you for allowing me to stay in the great state of South Carolina and work with you guys. I'm available for questions now. Also available to kind of help hold the hand of staff and elected officials as you guys start to implement and think about what those first steps might be. That's what I'm here for. I'm a local guy, so Mayor, this is my nod to you that I'll come back whenever you ask me to and help you implement instructions.
Any questions, council?
Any questions?
You want to ask the public to have it, but we have it on the crew here. We have?
Happy to.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Is irrigation included with the policy?
It is, it is.
When you're talking about the soil over at Cambraco Park, yeah, I tell Andre I was telling him, my dad used to farm that land whenever he was a boy. He always told me how bad that land was. But Andre, there's changes that we did to that front field that's right behind the community center. Did we put some topsoil down and?
We put topsoil down and, um, I was talking about six inches, one place, which said, that actually it grew better. And we first of all, it was extremely fast, and even the areas that you have right around the walkway, it was all red clay until we got, uh, so we was kind of working in Mitchell M and God's Company Works as well, too. So it was all red clay, I mean, red.
It looked bad, it looked bad, that's the part of the dirt.
So we've got, we came a little way from what we, where we were, but.
As I said, well-maintained, you can tell it's well-used.
Oh, yes.
We've prayed we had the worst soil in the whole state, probably.
Those transitions over between red clay and sand.
I mean, perhaps like a prayer vigil around the dirt.
That's right, that's right.
I have one more question about the irrigation. Are the water sources, have they been defined?
They have not been defined, so that would be the level of detail. They say your local civilian, your, they start engineering, what's it, what's it?
For the record, at Cambraco Park, and we do have irrigation on all fields, even with the football field, so we do have irrigation out of Cambraco, there's no irrigation. Moores Park, with the exception of Franklin, that's why I did the gazebo thing, we don't have any irrigation out of P. Park.
But the one thing, once we get that pond reestablished, then you build a, your water source becomes natural versus. Oh, you're fine, you're fine. Any other questions from the public? Shane, you good? Council? Anything you want to add last minute?
Good times. I'm sorry.
You said you wanted to come back? I'm just kidding. Yeah. Mr. Sanders, you teach landscape architect at Clemson?
I do.
Yeah, that's, that's the only kick we've had, so I'm just kidding.
Other than that?
Yeah, we've been very cordial, we've been very cordial.
We've been very cordial, so yeah, but we appreciate everything.
Mayor and counsel, thank you very much.
Have a safe trip home.
Yes, you.
Just push it and hold it. Take them down and back back up. All right. Next on our agenda is ordinance four sixty-nine, orders to raise the revenue and adopt the budget for the town of Pageville for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is second reading. Mr. Slough?
All right. I've had a lot of changes from the last, there are a few changes and we'll go through those. First of all, we've still got it listed as a two new increase. Last time we discussed the increase with the rise in fuel costs and those type of things, we'll need the increase to help us out with that. So we've decreased the budget by seventy thousand dollars, well, let me back up. We decreased it by the amount that was requested for the police cars because we just purchased two new police cars. So we took that down. What was left after we, when we were pulling from the deferred revenue, the revenue that we still had on the books from previous years, we took that off. So what we've done here is done an allocated difference from prior years, we removed forty thousand six hundred dollars. So now we are, we have a balanced budget without using prior year income. Some other changes that we made, there was a little bit of a surplus after that. We put that in contingency, brought contingency up thirty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Actually, I think we added that amount to it. Ends up being about one to two percent of contingency for a three million dollar budget is what we end up with. Admin vehicles, we added about eight hundred dollars there. Admin dues, we added about seven hundred dollars, admin travel about five hundred dollars. With us having Kelly, she's gonna have some travel, get her certifications, those type of things. We've added some there for that. Fire department salaries, so we made a change in fire department salaries, we increased them by seven thousand dollars. That would give the park managers and the fire chief a pay increase. Non-departmental employee benefits, we increased it by fifteen hundred dollars. Where we gone reductions at, fire department vehicle repairs, we reduced it by four thousand dollars. That four thousand dollars moved from vehicle repairs to fire department salaries that we had the seven thousand dollars increase on. And there should be a copy of these changes there in the packet too, if you want to look over. The non-departmental civic, we reduced it by three thousand dollars. Police vehicle, we reduced it by seventy, like I spoke on earlier. Earlier, and on the first budget, we had money sitting in Sutton Street, that was a mistake and we moved that around. So part of that went back to the contingency. So back and forth, we moved about eighty-five thousand dollars back and forth between other places. One of them was a complete removal, which was an allocated difference from prior years. So at the end of the day, let's go here. Our revenues, and last time I didn't include the twenty grant revenues on there. Most of these revenues, we already have in the bank. We're just carrying them forward to next year. So our total revenues come out to eight million six hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Our thirty fund has stayed about the same. Ten fund, it come down since the last reading because of the police vehicles. Sixty fund is about where it was previous year. I think there's a little bit more in there than previous year. On the expenditure side, we have a balanced budget. The expenditures equal the revenues. So we've got three million two hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred in the ten fund. Our grant expenditures, we plan on expanding those the way they're supposed to be. Like I said, most of those, we already have the money. Thirty fund, that's about what it was last year, sixty funds is the same. This is the ten fund and how it actually, last month there was a little bit, the spreadsheet, or this graph here was a little bit off. It had attorney fees at seventy-seven hundred dollars, which actually should have been victim's advocate. Victim's advocate wasn't on there at all. That there is corrected now and everything actually balances what was in the books. That's fixed from what it was last year. And you can see, for the most part, the police department gets reliance share because, you know, their staffing and them being, having so much equipment, the cost of some of their equipment. And then sanitation's right behind them under the ten fund as far as the net's largest one. This is how those expenditures break down. Whereas ten percent being in your, well, let's start off with here. And these are all your grant funds. So your twenty fund, we've got about six hundred thousand in there for sewer rehab. Twenty-five fund, which you see Virginia, we currently don't have anything. The thirty-five fund, the ARP money that we have set aside for the water tower. The forty fund is the RIA grants that we currently have on the book. And what that is, that's that RIA grant that Royal Water got through the town for the water tower that they're planning on building. And the fifty fund, the RDA, there's about five hundred thousand left in there. And that actually is working with the wastewater treatment plant, getting the defense and stuff to finalize that. This is what we're looking like on our next section here, the water sewer admin. This is the thirty account. Water sewer admin is looking at a hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred. Water plant reservoir, it's called that, we don't actually have the water plant. But that money is what we actually pay Royal Water for our water, is what that actually is. This stations, and sewer plant, we've got five hundred fifty thousand dollars in it. Operations maintenance, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, non-departmental lab, five hundred twenty-three thousand. And that's all that I have for that ordinance.
Any questions, comments from counsel regarding the items presented by Mr. Slough regarding ordinance four sixty-nine?
Not that specific, but you mentioned the new water tower. Is that being held by Royal Water?
Yes, so that grant was applied for by Royal Water through the town because they had to go through somebody else to do so. So that come through the town. So they're managing that and they're using those funds to buy the water tower.
I think referred to as a municipal partner, what they had to have to apply for those funds. Since they're listed as a nonprofit, they could not go straight to the state to request those funds. So we partnered with them to allow that to happen. So that's, and my understanding is that'll probably start sometime next year, that water tower.
So I don't know exactly where they are in the process. I know they've already been awarded a million dollars. I think they're probably somewhere in engineering or even somewhere, if I had to guess. And that tower's going to go out at forty room.
Any other questions, comments from counsel? Here none, need a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance four sixty-nine. Got a motion? Second, any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, ordinance four seventy, orders to adopt accommodation, hospitality, and budget for fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is our second reading. Mr. Slough?
All right, we've got, on the hospitality budget, we have a total of three hundred forty-three thousand three hundred. Two hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred, that is spent on recreation department. Ninety-eight thousand eight hundred is used in other items, which may, like, the Christmas decorations downtown, parks, whatever. Parts would actually fall into the recreation side of things most of the time. But, you know, things where we're sprucing up downtown, those type of things, those will come out at non-departmental. Missling is transfer is for, whenever we have to transfer funds, what we use for the watermelon festival. Whenever we're doing overtime for that, we can charge that because it's related.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Questions, comments from counsel?
No change on this one since the last reading.
Okay. If there are any questions, I need a motion to approve second reading of ordinance four seventy. Got a motion? And a second, any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda is ordinance four seventy-one. Adoption of a state standard code, this is the second reading. Mr. Slough?
All right, these are the standard codes, the twenty-one international building code, the residential code, the existing building code, the fire code, the plumbing code, so on and so forth. There's a whole ton of them here. We normally update these about every, just every year, Tommy?
Yes, every two years.
Every two years we update this, just the state's standard with what the state and international codes are.
This is the same thing the county uses too, I think, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments from counsel? If there are none, need a motion to approve second reading of ordinance four seventy-one. Got a motion?
Sure.
Second, any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, ordinance four seventy-two. Annexation of property belonging to J O J Services located at tax map number zero thirty-one, zero one twelve, zero one two, double oh one, zero zero nine, which is property behind five oh eight Clark Street. This is the second reading. Mr. Slough?
All right, much like last time, this little boot-shaped piece here, Jermaine's asking the town annex that in so that he has this entire property right here to develop. This portion right here is not currently in town.
Well, that is about one point four three acres based on what's highlighted in the red, what looks like on the bottom there, so. Any questions, comments from counsel? Here none, need a motion to approve second reading of ordinance four seventy-two.
Motion.
Got a motion? Second, any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. Moving on to new business. Item one is the Willie Williams Award. This is the authorization from town to purchase the plaque for the recipient. I have one of the family members here, Ms. Kristi Williams Winchester, make sure I call it right. Do you have anything you want to add, Ms. Winchester, regarding the? Just in case any kind of, and what we said we would do is, when we talked about doing this award is, is I think Ms. Winchester has a committee together to receive nominations from the public for this individual. And of course, everybody knows Willie Williams and what he's done for the community. And so what this would do, we want to provide a plaque of some sort or a trophy or. Did you ever come up with anything that you wanted, or just was it leaving as a plaque or a trophy or? Someone, some way of recognizing the individual that you guys select?
Right, so what I wanted to look at, and I didn't know what the budget would be, so that's why I wanted to be present. It's just an award, ah, I'm jostling here, just an award that would symbolize unity. Whether it's, you know, a ball with two hands crossing, but it's something that symbolizes unity and unity. Because that's what my thought was all about.
Got you. And so what we're looking, what we talked about doing, we had this discussion with Ms. Winchester. I think Mr. Chief Rivers, we were talking about as well, about the town, you know, putting, paying for that portion of the award. So, and what we'll do is, once they receive nominations and they select their individual, that person will be brought to a council meeting and we'll recognize them and present the, I guess, we'll have the family present the trophy or plaque to the. So whatever.
The committee will be here.
Yes, okay. So.
This is going to be ongoing.
Yes, I would love for this to be ongoing, knowing how many years of service that Mr. Williams has done for us. We've added up, there's a bunch, well, forty?
Forty-two.
Yes. So a lot of people don't make it to age forty-two, and he volunteered that much of his life, so. Any questions, comments? I'd almost say that we can set aside nothing no more than, it's an arbitrary number, I hadn't talked to Kristi about it, but maybe say a hundred fifty or two hundred dollars that we can set aside for that. You know, I doubt it would be that expensive, but nothing over that amount to authorize the town administrator to. Counsel fine with that? Is that sufficient for what you think? To me, I thought.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And I would say we'll have Mr. Slough, you know, once you make a selection of what's needed, then what we can do is you can kind of let Mr. Slough know, say, hey, this is what, this is how much it's going to cost to have it personalized. Here's the message that's on it, and we'll take care of it from there, I think.
Okay, now will I need to come before counsel every year, or will we speed?
I think now that we got, we're going to have it as a budget item on our, every year.
Okay.
But you'll have to work with us, let us know when you're ready to present this. But if your committee changes, you know, or timeframe changes, we just need to communicate that with our town administrator. And so he can facilitate a lot of that information to us. Unless you want to come here and do some kind of, we'll leave it up to you. So with that being said, I need a motion from counsel to authorize the town administrator for funds for this award, for the Willie Williams Award, not to exceed two hundred dollars? Got a motion? And a second, Mr. Baker?
I beat you, Mr. Baker.
Will you second it, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. And we thank you, Ms. Winchester, thank your family.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the sewer rehab project, and this is the change order number two. Mr. Slough?
So on the pipe burst in downtown that they've been working on, they've run across four additional, I think it was four additional laterals, but they did not allot for when they were doing the planning on it. The additional is going to cost twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. I talked with the engineer about it, he says he's pretty certain there's enough contingency to cover that. So we've got to approve that change order for them to reconnect their sewer, that's what they're doing. Where they don't do, throw out their sewer and have to.
Got you. Excuse me, that's a couple. So the amount you need approval for is twenty-two thousand four hundred?
Yes.
And that, we have that money set aside in contingency.
According to the engineer, that's building of the contingency of the project, so it should be in.
Okay, all right. Questions, comments from counsel? If there are none, need a motion to approve change order number two for the sewer rehab project for downtown. Motion? Second, any further discussion? Here in all favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda is the police vehicle firearm racks. Mr. Slough?
So the police department has approached us and asked to be able to purchase rifle mounts for their vehicles. The money that they're asking to use for this is from the sale of the two vehicles, two police vehicles that the town agreed to surplus a couple of months back. They sold last week and did they accept them? Okay, so one of them right now has sold and they've come and got it. The other one, they laid it back down and we're waiting to find out if there's number two there or considered or not. But they want to use the funds from the sale of those vehicles to purchase. But they want to use the, the funds from the sale of those vehicles to purchase these rifle racks for their vehicles. You know, so the rifles aren't just laying around in the forest, they're, they're actually secured.
Do we have an anticipated cost on those?
They're, they're thinking approximately about three thousand dollars. There was about thirty-four hundred dollars is what it originally was from the seller that both of those vehicles, if the second, uh, bidder decided, or who decides he wants it, there still should be a, there's still should be slightly more than three thousand, there shouldn't be above the, the total of three thousand.
Okay. Questions, comments from council? There are none need a motion to approve the purchase of the firearm racks requested by the police department. Got a motion? Second, any further discussion? You know, if they ever raise your right hand. Next is the police sign-on bonus. Mr. Sly.
So we had a officer leave a couple of months back, I think it was somewhere about August, September. And he was a new officer, so anytime we have a new officer who's just come out of the academy, the academy allows for us to, to reach out to the agency who, who they're going to, if they've been there less than two years, we're allowed to request funds back. He'd been here less than a year, so I think the amount that we ended up sending the bill to, the sheriff's office for was somewhere about nine to ten thousand dollars. The police department's asking if we can use that nine to ten thousand dollars that we used to train him, that they refunded us back as a, a way of a sign-on bonus for getting new certified, uh, new officers here. They've, they've laid out a plan, there should be one in your pocket. For certified officers, they're wanting to do a twenty-five hundred dollar sign-on bonus, first payment of five hundred dollars at the first, in the F P O, which is for four to six weeks. Second being the thousand dollar payment at the one-year anniversary, and third payment of the thousand dollars at the second year anniversary. And for a non-certified, five hundred dollars at the four to six week. Well, twelve, twelve weeks plus four to six weeks F P O, so after they get out of the academy, plus four to six weeks F P O. Second payment of five hundred at the one-year anniversary, and third payment at the second year anniversary. Along with that, they're also wanting to pay the officers to work for them who were, are out recruiting people. Um, seven fifty if they, they recruited a certified person, or five hundred if they recruited a non-certified person. And they, they have, those people have to meet criteria before they give the bonus. But it's going to, we don't have a whole lot of extra money, we just, uh, we do have the money that we received for that, so we cap out at that. Once we hit that, we can just cap down.
Yeah, it stops from that point.
Unless we renew it.
Unless y'all renew it or something, or, you know, somebody leaves and we get another, another big payment like that.
Well, that's my question, would, would the next one come in?
Right, well, it, it ends at the end of that unless, unless we have another officer leaving and, and they ask to do that.
Are we allocating funds for this specific purpose?
The funds that they're asking to use are what we've received already, so it, so it would be the money we've already received. We, we've already put it back in general fund, but, so the money's there.
But once we max out on the ten thousand dollars, it stops, or like?
Yes.
You know, like the two, the two, two certified officers would get half of that.
And, and, yeah, this is what the, the chief has put together and asked me to put before y'all, so, th- this is how he wanted to do it, try to recruit some qualified people.
And we're all on the same page with capping out, right, with maxing out?
I, I don't know that he knows that, but, uh, he's, he's asked to use that fund, and so I, I'm, I'm under the assumption that he's, he's aware that it's going to cap out. Because he asked to use that fund.
Other local towns, municipalities doing the same thing with the, uh, hiring bonuses?
I have seen, I have seen other municipalities, uh, using higher, um, sign-on bonuses for police officers here recently. Because job market's been so hard.
Yeah, Highway Patrol, Highway Patrol has been, they've had big bucks between, uh, D P S, which is your state transport, transport police and Highway Patrol, uh, probation, uh, S L E N, all your, all your state agencies, S E D C, all those across the board have sustained significant increases, um, salary increases. Now, some of them make, some of them use a hybrid of sign-on bonus, or they'll give a bonus, you know, after they've been on for a while, but they're hurting so bad for employees right now, they're really, this, the, the General Assembly has allowed them to, or funded them some additional funds to help with, with, with either retention bonuses or sign-on bonuses. Like, 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 County Sheriff's Office, you know, that's, a lot of folks who, from this area go over there to work if they, if they can get away, you know, I know there's three or four officers that have, have worked here, then gone to the county, and then they're over there now working. So, because they say, they pay a lot more than what we do, a lot more, so, um. This is one of those things that if, if, if you don't act, you snooze, you lose, and you're going to be losing your employees, so, um.
Your current employees wouldn't profit from it?
No, no, they, only, only part, they would.
It's new, it's new people that would profit from it.
Only ones that would profit would be the ones if they were, if they do a referral, which is that bottom portion, that's next to the bottom, so.
And there's not any other equipment that the police department would, would prefer to use at ten thousand dollars?
This is what they've asked to use at half.
They see that as their biggest need.
Yeah, same here. Any other questions from co- from council, comment?
And I did just get a text from Captain Whitley, said to let y'all know that there are two sergeants leaving for more money.
When you got noticed, that, noticed probably today, right?
Yes.
So.
But that does, that does not address that, right?
No, this, this is part of the, you have this as a possibility to recruit somebody to replace them.
Okay.
No, we make your motion, if you don't mind, make it where, uh, where somebody can't leave and try to come back next week and, and get your sign-on.
Yeah.
We, we, we don't want nobody.
And we need to make sure that, you know, if everybody's hands, well, ten thousand dollars is met.
Right.
It's, it's maxed out, there, there's no more in, in the, in the bucket for it, so.
See when that verb is made in there that they can't quit and come back?
Yeah, that, that's not a.
I don't think we would be going, they'd have to go to the bottom of the, the poll for something like that, so. Um, all right, one more time, questions, comments from council?
Uh, I, just one more question, I want to make sure. When the guy comes and you give him the first payment of five hundred dollars, the third, the second payment is a year, and then it's third payment is two years.
Mm-hmm.
So, how long you plan on holding the, the ten thousand dollars?
Once we, once we've maxed out what the ten thousand dollars is going to be, then we'll, we'll keep track of how much, how much we spend extended of that ten thousand.
You'll do a budget carry for it, basically what, what happens, you just carry forward that funds until you can expend it all the way out.
Okay.
So.
What, what happens if, like, if we have a bunch of them, they don't, we run out of money before we get to the, the third payment? Is that?
That's what he was just talking about.
Okay, okay.
Before it ever gets to that, we will have to.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, you can, you can.
Sorry.
So you're probably really looking at maybe three employees.
Yes.
You know, looking at long-term.
If you're doing certified, yes, you'd have three.
Right. Okay. Hold on, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Because that could be misleading.
Right.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
That could be very misleading.
I think probably what you need to do is communicate that with, with Chief Short, you know, about the.
Yeah, I really think you need some clarification on that, you know, I think you do, I think you see which way we're heading with that.
Right.
You know, make sure that everybody's on the same page.
I think what we can do from our perspective, we can authorize this to be put in place, but we'll leave it up to you and Chief Short to fully implement that and, and monitor it.
Okay.
From a budgetary and implementation phase, our perspective, I should say.
But I'm good with it, if that's, if that's, if that's where they see their need is, with this Tampa out and not, I'm, I'm good with it.
Any other questions, comments from council? You're none need a motion to approve the police sign-on bonus as presented? Motion? Second, any further discussion? You know, if they ever raise your right hand. All right, next is the auction of hardware store items. Mr. Sly.
All right, so we've got information back from the attorney's office on the hardware store to be able to do something with the items in it. I've had pull-it works down there going through stuff that they'll, that they will use and they will need, you know, on their, their, their past job, so they can, um, yeah.
Looking at the same thing?
Yes, they, their, their bids are. Because they, they use the town's bid form, which it told them. It told them how big, or what size line and everything on the fence and, um, you know, how, um, how much is, uh, existing fence was there and how much we would need to remove, and how far the fence would need to be done, also with the barbed wire over the top. The cost of rock removal required, they put that in there, uh, and gave the total bids based on that.
That rock removal, that's based on per cubic yard, correct?
Per foot.
Per foot, cubic yard, so this fifty, both of these numbers are not complete until they know exactly how much cubic yard they'll actually remove, because that's on, that's on a, a unit cost and not a total lump sum cost. So what they'll, so I guess what we can do is, we can approve the fifty-seven, fifty-six, if we, if we decide to go that route. The fifty-six, seven, twenty-five, because that's the known vari- known quantities of what, what we're ordering. And the only part that will be variable will be the, the rock removal cost, because if that's done on a unit price, then they'll just tell us at the end, say, all right, here's how much, how many truckloads we removed, and we get billed for that. So we would have to have authority to come back and invoice that at a later date.
Right. We, we should come in as a single change order.
Yeah, 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 that's. I wouldn't think that, sometimes those rock removal things, they just put them in there just in case you need them, or they may not even use it at all, but, um.
Removals expensive, right?
Yeah. Any questions, comments from council? You're none need a motion to approve from council to award the bid to Henry's Construction in the amount of fifty-six, seven, twenty-five, plus any additional costs needed for the rock removal, based on unit price. Got a motion?
Sure.
Second, any further discussion? You know, if they ever raise your right hand. Next on the agenda is the twenty-twenty debt write-off. Mr. Sly.
All right, twenty-twenty debt write-off. We have nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents in debt write-off from the year twenty-twenty. This comes from folks who have not paid for their sewer deals over that year and would have been holding on to the books. State has been allowing us three years to hold it on the books. They've actually upped it to five years, but I don't want to hold it for five years. If, um, if we're going to be, have to add another year back to it at some point and double it up, so. I'd rather write it off now, and if I get back, um, we'll add it back to the, uh, the write-off that was recovered, but for now, I'd like to, we're going to write those off.
And the amount is ninety-four?
Nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Just want to make sure this. And as in the past, if any of these folks were to come up and wanted to reconnect, there's a red flag just thrown up.
Yes, there, there is a, a flag in the system, if they want to reconnect, they've got to pay these bills before they can, and then pay another deposit before they can reconnect.
Any other questions, comments from council regarding this item? You're not need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty debt write-off that has been requested in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents from twenty-twenty. Got a motion? Second, any further discussion? You know, if they ever raise your right hand. Next on the agenda is the administrator's report. Mr. Sly.
All right, got a couple, or quite a few things here, and this is a, this is a twelve-pack, of course. All right, number one, the financial statement has been provided, there's also a copy of the file report up here, uh, as always, if y'all would like to look through it. The police department received a five thousand dollar grant for body cameras. The veterans program was a success after, uh, the program was provided, uh, appreciate everybody who participated in that, and I think it turned out to be a fine unit. Construction of the, at the F P O is complete, we had to walk through it this morning, uh, most of it looks pretty good, just a couple of little punch list items that we need to get them to work on, but for the most part, it looks really good, you know, if y'all have a chance to ride down and take a look at it. Uh, since council approved the data max, um, helping us with business license in November, uh, I think it was October of last year, data max has recovered thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Half of that, we had to pay back to data max because that was the agreement, that they got half for, uh, for that business license that we weren't currently connecting, but we got almost forty thousand dollars, so that's almost twenty thousand dollars in the town budget that we hadn't been given. Um, we're able to move the con kids at Farmer's Market, as I was saying earlier, pull it works have been, uh, down there working, cleaning out the con kids that they need, and all other items will be auctioned. Water meter, um, the water meter work has had a small setback, it, uh, they're planning on having the, uh, the radio rigs finished by the end of January. Uh, Christmas down, uh, Christmas decorations downtown are open, they, uh, from what I can see, they look pretty good. Uh, special thanks to pull it works for hanging those, and also the volunteers who came out to make sure the decorations look really good for the town. But I, I think, I think it looks great, I'm glad we're going to have any hiccups this year. Um, I received an email last Tuesday from Tisher Vice, uh, who's doing the impact study. They should be complete within a few weeks, um, they're in the process of doing some data analytics for the, uh, for the utilities. So they, we should have some stuff on the impact study here in a couple of weeks. Um, received an e- uh, email from the town's water engineer today, uh, you know, there's been some question on the water at, uh, at Laney property, um, with the growth that's coming. Uh, what he said is he's run. Uh, what he said is he's run several, um, models, he said the models of the proposed homes at Lane growth are, um, does not have a negative impact on the town's water system. He, he said even with, uh, with pressures and that type of thing, everything still works good. The pipe bursting and repair downtown is mostly complete. And on Saturday, as Ken said just minutes ago, there'll be a Christmas spectacular and a Christmas parade downtown. And that's all that I have at this time.
That concludes all the items up through eight. Motion? Second, any further discussion? All favor raise your right hand, we'll take about two minutes recess, and then go into executive session, thank y'all.